Testing one, two, three. This will be the August 20th, 2014 City Council Regular Meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a regular City Council meeting of the City of Satellite Beach, August 20th, 2014, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Vice Mayor Gott for a moment of silence and the pledge.
Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Pledge.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Agenda Item Three, Citizens' Comments. This is for non-agenda items.
Let me get this set up here real quick. I bring a clock with me nowadays. Steve Hedley, resident. During the August 6th meeting, conspicuously absent from the agenda was an agenda that's typically, an agenda item, that is typically seen on City Council meetings, the report from the city attorney. As such, there was no comments or reports given by Mr. Beetle at that time. Agenda Item 10 was described as, quote, "an agenda item for, agenda items for next regular council meeting." Under that agenda item, Mayor Catino asked for a report from the city attorney, Jim Beetle, regarding the sign issue that I have been patiently trying to get addressed for the last two years. Why the report from Mr. Beetle was under this item is a mystery. At the prior City Council meeting, Mr. Beetle was tasked to, quote, "come back and talk to us," unquote, on sign ordinance and not just specifically to report on whether the sign ordinance should appear in the agenda for the August 20th meeting. Nonetheless, Mr. Beetle gave his report on talking with a person at a conference on the issue. The City Council then decided not to take up the issue. The unapproved minutes say the reason was this, "reason was since there is, quote, 'no definitive law on this subject that would require changing the code,' unquote. The City Council operates under a set of modified Robert's Rules of Orders. One of the Robert's stipulations is that if a staff member or support is going to give a report on an agenda item, that report should be listed on the agenda prior to the meeting. That did not happen here. Furthermore, Mayor Catino said he could not make a motion on the agenda item. This is curious as according to City Council policies and procedures, the agenda for a meeting shall be prepared by the city manager in conference with the mayor, thus eliminating the need for any motion on agenda items from the mayor at the time. It is therefore arguable that the City Council violated its own rules on this issue. However, while the statement, since there is no definitive law on the subject that would require changing the code, may be correct in the summation of Mr. Beetle's conversation with an unknown attorney and under unknown circumstances, the fact of the matter is that there is a clear violation of the law at which the city code violates. In June of 1994, the Supreme Court decided the case of the City of Ladue versus Margaret Gilio. The City of Ladue, Missouri had a restriction on signs that included a number of free expression signs as well as an outright ban on signs in windows. Satellite Beach has similar restrictions on free expression signs as well as an outright ban on window signs in residential areas while allowing window signs in commercial areas. In its unanimous Supreme Court decision, Justice Stevens noted, quote, "Gilio amended her complaint to challenge new ordinance which explicitly prohibits window signs like hers. The district court held the ordinance unconstitutional and the Court of Appeals affirmed. Relying on the plurality of the opinion in Metro Media versus San Diego, the Court of Appeals held the ordinance invalid as contents-based regulation because the city treated commercial speech more favorable than non-commercial speech and favored some kinds of non-commercial speech over others." Stevens then moved to say, "Ladue, however," continues, "that its ordinance is a mere regulation of the time, place, or manner of speech because residents remain free to convey their desired messages by other means such as..." (phone ringing) ...such as letters, handbills, flyers, telephones, calls, newspaper advertisements, bumper stickers, speeches, and neighborhood or community meetings. However, even regulations that do not foreclose an entire medium of expression but merely shift the time, place, or manner of its use must, quote, 'leave open, ample, alternative channels for communication,' unquote. In this case, we are not persuaded that inadequate substitute exists for the important medium of speech that Ladue has closed off." Continuing from the decision, "displaying a sign from one of its residents often carries a message quite distinct from placing the sign, the same sign someplace else, or conveying the same text or picture, 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 by other means. Precisely because of their location, such signs provide information about the identity of the speaker." Ladue's argument was similar to that offered by the council on the city's ability to restrict times, restrict signs on time, place, and manner. That specific argument was rejected by the Supreme Court. Councilman Montanaro also offered the idea on restricting signs on the basis of status. The court addressed this as well, saying, "It bears mentioning that individual residents themselves have a strong incentive to keep their own property values up and to prevent visual clutter in their own yards and neighborhoods, incentives markedly different from those persons who erect signs on others' lands and others' neighborhoods or on public property. Residents' self-interest diminishes the law, the danger of unlimited proliferation of residential signs that concerns the City of Ladue."
Five minutes, I'll give you...
Twenty seconds. I'm done. The Supreme Court struck down the ban on window signs as well as addressed the other signs. For my purpose, I only need to show that there is a law, definitive law, that clearly demonstrates the city current bans on signs is unconstitutional. The city's restriction on window signs is contrary to the Supreme Court ruling. This is not a matter of conjecture. This is not a matter of opinion. This is not a matter where we need to consult another unnamed attorney. It's flat out wrong.
Thank you. Appreciate your input. Any further comment, citizens' comments, while the floor is still open? Okay, hear and none. Close the citizens' comments and come...
Mr. Mayor, I want to correct a misstatement that was made. Couple of misstatements. Under Robert's rules, which we follow unless we have policies specifically to the contrary, Robert's rules say that if you have an agenda item that has no item to it, then it shouldn't be on the agenda. And that's why the attorney, the city attorney's report came off of there. When he does have a report, he will let the city manager know and it will go back on. Florida law says that an agenda does not need to list every item that will be discussed at a meeting. Mr. Beetle was called on to give us the information regarding the attorney's conference that he attended at the time that we were deciding what our next agenda would be. So there was nothing inappropriate that was done by this council. We are not violating our own policies, and that's the fact.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Four, Citizen, City Council Comments. Let's start. Mark?
Okay. Just want to thank the city for the opportunity to go to the Florida League of Cities meeting, which was last week. I attended on the 14th and the 15th and was involved in the Committee on Taxation. And I'm not going to comment a whole lot on that because I know we have an agenda item on this regarding medical marijuana, but the taxation issue, how it's going to be collected, how it's going to be dispersed is a huge issue in the state of Florida. There's a lot of ideas out there, and I'll kind of talk about some of those later, but that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention the passing of Mr. Vince Bellamo. I know a number of us knew him and worked with him over the years. Vince was a terrific contributor to our city, serving on a number of boards. I know that when I first got started in the city, he was on the board that I was appointed to. And I can recall that I used to appreciate his comments because he was a very wise and reasonable man, and we will miss him.
Thank you. Any other business?
Just to follow up on my range, actually Vince was a councilman in Satellite Beach for a few years and served as one of, as a vice mayor at one point in time. Also, another passing in Satellite Beach was Ernie Hartman. Ernie Hartman was Ed Hartman's father, and Ernie passed away yesterday, I believe, yesterday or the day before also. So we've lost, you know, two, two people who were instrumental in our city. Also, Mr. Guarino passed away. He lived in our city at one point in time, and we actually did a commemoration for him and for his 90th birthday. But he was a fighter pilot, he was a downed pilot, and was a prisoner of war for, I believe, seven years, and he passed away the day before yesterday also. So we lost three, three people that were instrumental in Satellite Beach's governance and just in our history. So let's see, on the 9th, I went to the Keeper of Art Beautiful cleanup, and you know, Ethan and his mom were there again, and they had another 30 some odd people. And I'm just amazed that I got phone calls, I got emails from this young man, and it's, he does this with all those people, and it's amazing the people that go out there and help them. I also attended the Jackie Burns dedication in Gleason Park for the playground equipment that Indian Harbor Beach purchased and named and dedicated on Jackie's behalf, and that was excellently done. They, you know, did a wonderful job. The playground equipment down there is like, it'd be great if they had adult playground equipment like that because, you know, it looked like it would be fun to play on. Courtney's daughter had a great time on it. Piper was out there playing. Along with Mark and Mayor and the city manager, I also attended the Florida League of Cities' annual conference down in Hollywood, and I attended a lot of seminars and policy committee meetings. Mine was the transportation. There's, there's a lot of different things that are going on in the state, and one of the seminars that I went to, and I think this was the one that probably stood out most for me, was the Sea Level Rise Seminar. And there were three PhDs that were there, all of them were from South Florida. One was from the University of Miami, one was from FIT, the other one I believe was from Nova, or not FIT but FIU. And the first person who got up and spoke was the man from the University of Miami. And a lot of what they were talking about was geared toward Dade and Broward County, but it affects the state of Florida when you look at the big picture of what's happening. But he mentioned in his first opening remarks that most of us have 30-year mortgages on our homes. And, you know, if we pay off our 30-year mortgage and live there for another 10 years or so, and we go to sell that home, the people that are buying those homes behind us, taking out a 30-year loan, will probably never be able to live in their house in certain parts of Dade and Broward County those 30 years. That's how fast they're anticipating parts of Dade and Broward County being affected by sea level rise. So that was pretty telling. I also attended the Space Coast League of Cities Board in General meeting on the 11th, and Courtney discussed with all of the participants that were there in the municipalities in Brevard County that we are on, we were going to be on the agenda at the county commission meeting for our first responder money, and we are on the agenda for next Tuesday at 10:30, I believe. Is that correct? And we're hoping that a lot of the elected officials from Brevard County come out to address that issue with the county commission. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. As some of you might know, qualifying ended today for the City of Satellite Beach for the council race, and there were two seats open and only two people applied to run, and I congratulate Steve Osmer and Dominic. And as of this time, there will be no election for the candidates in Satellite Beach. It's, they were the two that stepped forward, and thank you for doing that. And we learned that today at 4:30 when it closed. So congratulations to both of you. I also attended Jackie Burns, the thing at the park, the dedication was done really, really well. The park's really, really nice, so they did a great job on it. Also, I attended Space Coast League of Cities and also the Florida League of Cities, where I sit on the environment board and water board. And a few things that are gonna be coming up, the federal government is changing how they classify federal waters. And I think this is going to be something that's going to be really important to stay up on. Things that you would have no idea that would ever be considered federal waters could be now considered federal waters, and we'd have to get permits through the federal government to do things. And the response from the Florida League of Cities will need to be back by October 1st, so Alan, the information, I handed it to Courtney, and I think it's something we really need to stay up on. We also last night had school board superintendent in town at the Schechter Center to give the presentation on the half-cent sales tax. He did a wonderful job, and if you haven't seen him, the presentation, it's well worth seeing the presentation. Very interesting, and I learned a lot from it every time I get to see it. But he'll be giving more around if you have questions on it. And I think that's all I have. Moving on to Agenda Item Five, City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor. The school sales tax forum was a great thing that we did for our community. I was kind of surprised at the small attendance. Actually, we did advertise that in the Beachcaster, and we advertised it on our sign in front of the DRS Center. I think at some point, he has been, I think he said it's like the 100th time he's been out, over 100 presentations he's made throughout the community, so that some of the community members may have already seen it. I do have a copy of his presentation that we will be, you know, putting up on our website, and I will be bringing out some of the points that he made and putting it on our Facebook page because I do think it's important for our citizens to realize what's at stake in terms of that sales tax. One of the questions he did answer were, was the, the thing, the, an answer to a question I get consistently is, you know, "When are they going to start sea park improvements?" because of the decline of that facility is, has been so drastic. And they are, if you look at their facility plan, which they did produce a large plan of how they're going to spend that sales tax dollar amount, and that, that plan is very detailed. It took them months to put together because they did a, a facility survey of each facility in their, in the entire county. The, the sea park list of improvements are there. He did answer that they will be beginning those improvements just like any other school. So that was, a lot of the concern was, you know, will they actually fix up sea park? And yes, they are planning on doing that. Back to school begins on, obviously already began on Monday. To lead into that is the first informational item that I have for you, and that's the crossing guard, kind of problem solving that our police department did. We got a request from a resident in the Chevy Chase area to, to put back that crossing guard. As you recall, we took that away because there just wasn't enough students using it to justify that, that location. But our police department, I gave you a description on how they handled it because I thought, you know, that's just such a classic Satellite Beach way of handling a problem. They went out and sent out 150 letters to those residents, did a survey of who would actually use it, and then they, they also began questioning the residents of Fountain, of the Fountain-Fulvar area, and they realized that they could combine that crossing guard into Jackson, and it's worked very well so far. So that's why you see that change. And it's also interesting to note that they could do that because of the improvements that we have done on South Patrick Drive to enable the kids to walk to school safely. So I thought that was a good, a good thing that we were able to do. If you noticed a theme of my city manager report, there was like a month of thank you notes, to the point where I didn't include them all, I just picked the best ones in the packet. One of the first ones is one from our public, for our Public Works Department staff, from a resident that turned in a complaint and they came and addressed it, and they got a good thank you note about the crew responding to the issue, and the members were Phil Kleins, John Here, Jay Verbrick, Random Shell, and Steve Torres. It's not often we get long descriptions of thank you notes like that, and I thought that they did a great job. I also wanted to give you some updates that the Public Works Department, in addition to all of their typical everyday maintenance, currently are replacing or filling in a lot of potholes right now. And they had a delay in getting asphalt, so they're, they're starting that process now. But they did repair half the intersection at Hamlin and Kale. They repaired several storm drains, including, and then also a major transformer due to a lightning strike at the Soto Ball Field. We did finally finish the new football field improvements over at the sports park and put up new goalposts at the Soto Practice Field. And if you noticed how pretty the fire department looks, it's because they got that done, they pressure washed that and painted it. So I just wanted to kind of describe how busy they've been. This is a busy time of year for them because it's the rainy season, so we get a lot of pipe breaks and a lot of potholes at this point. I did want to point out that we did get a thank you note for the fire department for their response to a medical call, and literally this is one out of five we get a month. So I think that's very telling of this level of service that our fire department provides to our community. Again, they're, you know, they, not only do we get the thank you for saving our lives, but even the small things like, you know, you fixed my broken arm and things like that, they get the thank you notes for that, how well they were treated when they, when they responded. And again, we got another thank you note for our police department for their response to a citizen concern. So it just kind of overall shows the great job our staff does on a daily basis. Before I get into the last...
I'll stop you for just a moment. Could you start providing copies of all of these thank you notes to the council?
Yeah.
Because I think we'd love to see them.
Yep. Before I get started on the last item and ask the fire department staff to come up, I wanted to let you know, and this is very exciting news, as you recall, we submitted an application to the TPO for the A1A project, and that was an application to put us in the queue for funding, and we did get funding. We got a lot of funding, actually. The design cost for the new A1A improvements, just the increase of, in the design costs, FDOT engineering designs are very expensive, and that increase in design cost is $205,000, and the TPO is covering that cost. And then also, they are providing us with $576,931 of transportation alternative funds for fiscal year 15, 16, for the construction of those improvements. So that's a big deal for us because it saves us a lot of money and allows us to use our money in, in those additional things that the resurfacing project won't cover. Okay? So that was great news. That was a good, thank you, John, for doing all the work with that. It was a good move for us to become involved in the TPO, and that, that helps us get, you know, that important, puts us in the queue for those funds. And the other good part of that is Cocoa Beach got also funds for the same thing, so we're getting that connection with our sister cities in, in transportation. I'm going to go ahead and invite the chief up, and we, I wanted to kind of highlight or have them highlight an incident that we had a week ago and, or a couple weeks ago that our fire department responded to, and I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to him and let him explain that.
Well, on August 6th, we presented the new fire apparatus, and August 7th, it was put into good use, and I'll just give you a quick background. On the night of August 7th, roughly about 8:35 at night, Brevard County Fire Rescue received a call on Plomosa Way in the north Indian Atlantic region for a structure fire. Upon arrival of Engine 63 from the county, they experienced very heavy fire conditions. They had a report of possibly somebody trapped inside the home. They made entry into the home, and while fighting the fire, the fire got quite out of hand, concerned about structural collapse, they declared a defensive mode of operation. But at the same time, both Tower 63 and Engine 55 were also dispatched to our mutual aid and automatic aid agreements. On arrival, Tower 63, led by Lieutenant Dan Senova in our one light blue shirt that we have, from Brevard County Fire Rescue, you're the odd man out, dude. And Brian Hills from Brevard County Fire Rescue, along with firefighters, John Duba from Satellite Beach Fire Department, Eric Tippens from Satellite Beach Fire Department, they began operations and fire suppression utilizing the ladder truck. About the same time, Melbourne Truck 74 and Satellite Beach Engine 55 were also on scene, and as soon as some of the fire was contained and conditions a little bit more safer, both of those units, Engine 55, led by Commander David Abernathy, and Truck 74 with a leader from Brevard County Fire Rescue, they began secondary search and rescue operations. Both Engine 55 and Truck 74 made it to the same, the room where an occupant was found, approximately 80-year-old female. She was found semi-conscious and barely breathing, and this is during fire operations, and they safely extricated her out of a bedroom window. That woman was transported to the hospital, and actually at the hospital, she went from a semi-conscious state to a conscious state, and she was actually conversing with physicians. She was later flown to Shands Hospital due to smoke inhalation issues, and to our knowledge, she's doing quite well at this time. So what I would like to do is, I like to bring these guys up here because this is one of those, I won't say once-in-a-lifetime things, but we rarely talk about people being saved from a structure fire. So what I'd like to do is, by the way, it was Engine 55, Captain Scott Manning, come on up. Firefighter EMT Eric Rose, come up, and we've got a son there, dude, come up too. You're a firefighter in training. We have firefighter babyface Nick Walsh, who was part of the Engine 55 crew, from Tower 63, Lieutenant Dan Senova from Brevard County Fire Rescue, and as I said, firefighter Brian Hills was unable to make it tonight for this. Firefighter EMT John Duba, firefighter paramedic Eric Tippens, and Commander David Abernathy. Like I said, you know, we talk about the good things that happen, you have the notes that you see all the time about the little things. Well, folks, this is the big thing. This is absolutely the big thing, and what makes this possible is the support from council, support from the community, and that support is in the form of apparatus, equipment, training, and personnel. And that night, though it wasn't a citizen of Satellite Beach, a citizen was benefited. And what I would like to say to our community, if we're doing this type of work outside of our city, what do you think we're doing inside of our city? I mean, and that's the system that you have created, and this is basically the rewards from it. So I just want to say to these guys...
Good job. Go home, you're all over train.
No. Hold on one second, please. Yep. A lot of times, I don't think we realize what the firefighters and our safety personnel, both police and fire, go through. You know, we hear about all the good times we have to put up with. And one of our firefighters had to go through not only the up, but also went through a really terrible down. And Nick Walsh was with the grandmother and took her to the hospital from a boat and accident that happened on O'Gally that you heard. So Nick, we're with you, buddy. Thank you very much for your service. I know it's tough, but we appreciate what you do, and if we can help you in any way, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I think that's all. I just wanted to, you know, let them also know that all of our, your department heads and your residents were all just bursting with pride for everything you guys do. I mean, you guys are great, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's really nice knowing they're on duty.
Yep. It is. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on to Agenda, excuse me, Agenda Item Number Six, Discuss and Take Action on the Right-of-Way Dedication. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall, we have an issue with part of our road on Shell Street. It's actually on the corner of Mr. Allison's property. He owns that property that's located at 1753 to 1773 Highway A1A, also known as Seaside Plaza, that has Sun, Sun on the Beach Restaurant in it. Basically, we, in order to complete our project with the reconstruction of Shell Street and the beach access is there, we really needed to get that issue resolved. Mr. Allison has graciously agreed to dedicate that property to the city at no cost to us. So he has done that for us, and I just wanted to, you know, say that we really appreciate his efforts. It is 99 square feet, more or less. We've provided the easement as well as the survey and all of the necessary items that go along with it. He has signed it, so it awaits the mayor's signature upon your approval.
I move to approve the Allison and Right-of-Way Acquisition Agreement and Quick Claim Deed for the Shell Street property.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Breimer, for the discussion from council. At this time, open this Agenda Item Number Six for public comment. Hear and none back to council. Courtney, great job. Thank you very much, and I know we've met with one particular, John, thank you, and we've met with some of the residents or one of the residents in particular on that street, and, you know, it's working out well, and I think it'll be a great project for the city. Any further discussion? Hear and none, nor...
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to...
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, John, thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Discuss, Take Action on Auditing Firm's Contract.
Thank you, Mayor. At your last meeting, you approved, or you approved the selection of Carwigs and Ingram LLC to issue the final audit of the city. We have drafted the proposal engagement letter for their services to be executed by myself upon your approval.
Make a motion to authorize this.
No, wait, wait. There needs to be a correction.
Oh, excuse me.
Mayor?
Yes.
This one's minor, on the page two, the third line from the bottom, it refers to us as the city commission, that needs to change to city council. And then go to page nine, the second to the last paragraph, that one-line paragraph, it says, "By mutual agreement of both parties, this contract can be extended beyond the contract period outlined in this engagement letter." Well, the contract period outlined in this engagement letter is specified right at the very beginning, and it goes through the year 2016 with two optional years for 2017 and 2018. And this one-line paragraph makes it sound that this contract can then be extended by mutual agreement beyond 2018, and I don't think that's the intent. So that one-sentence paragraph needs to be stricken.
Okay. And I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to approve the contract with Carter Rings, Riggs, Ingram with the outline changes. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Further discussion from council? Here and none, open up for public comment on this Agenda Item. Here and none, bring it back to council. Any further? Lenore?
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Decker?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Four, nothing, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Eight, Discuss, excuse me, I'm going to open up a public hearing for Agenda Item Eight, Discuss, Take Action on Resolution Number 952. Jim?
Resolution Number 952, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, imposing an annual stormwater utility assessment for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2014, against all real property within the city limits of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, providing for classifications of property, providing for certification of annual stormwater utility assessment role, providing an effective date. I'm reading a resolution number 952.
Thank you. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. At your workshop that we had with you on July, I think it was 25th, we provided an outline of issues with our stormwater utility, as well as the needs in terms of our rate structure. At that time, we had recommended two alternatives. One was at $85 for each equivalent residential unit, and the other was $104 per equivalent residential unit. At that time, we felt that we could step into the program of 104 being the need, that we could go to an $85 ERU, $85 ERU this year, and then do a 104 next year, as to kind of alleviate the shock of an increase to our residents. However, we are running into a lot of utility problems in terms of pipe issues that we need to work on. As you recall, with this year, this proposed budget that we provided to you, we are actually bringing in $38,000 from our general fund into the stormwater utility, or we're actually just making it up in our operating expenses, which the stormwater utility should be paying. So we are also, and because of the problems with the stormwater utility, we are paying off debt in maintenance only. So we have really no money to do pipe replacements or any drainage improvements. And I'd like to ask Alan to come up and kind of give an overview of some of the recent issues that have come to light, to the point where we feel it's irresponsible for us to continue with that recommendation of the step plan to you because of the problems that we're having with the utility in terms of the infrastructure and the need to fix things. So we would feel that we would be irresponsible for not letting you know the issues with that. So I'm going to ask Alan to kind of give you that overview.
Well, thank you, Courtney. Recent rains, you know, rains do a lot of things. They make things grow, and, you know, rain is good in a lot of ways, but it's also bad in a lot of ways where they make potholes grow, and the pipe problems that are minor become major, and things like that, especially, you know, some of the aging pipes that we have in the city now. We've done a great deal of work replacing our storm drains, the major problem areas, but we still have quite a few to go. And just last week, we ran into a problem on Hamlin and Cale where the pipe has actually failed, and we didn't have the money to fix it outright. We were going to Band-Aid it and try to get through till next, after October, when the new money comes in. That's how the guys put it. And try to get it fixed properly, but in order to fix it properly, you know, you have to have new pipe and possibly new structures and things like that. And if there's no money there, there's no money there. And that's just one problem that is indicative of a larger problem throughout the city. I mean, you know, anytime we have a decent rain event, you can drive down Sherwood and see that something's wrong. You can drive down Cale or Temple and get around Hamlin and Sherwood and see that something's wrong. Those are the issues that we need to take care of, and, you know, there's other issues around the city, but those right there are glaring as rain. So the stormwater utility is in a bad way, and, you know, if there's some way that we can find to get a little bit more resource to work for us, I think the city and the residents will see some things being done that help alleviate the issues that we're seeing right now.
And the other thing I wanted to add is, this budget year currently, we had to take funds from the capital assets program or fund and transfer them to the stormwater fund to cover debt service, and those are funds that we could use for potholes and AC, you know, the DRS centers, AC went down just a couple weeks ago, and those all cost us a lot of money. It's gotten to the point where we're doing emergency maintenance, and that's very costly, and it's like similar to what Dr. Millian was saying when he was giving his presentation. It's ultimately, it's a costly and ultimately very inefficient way to do business. That's kind of where we're at right now, and we really wanted to limp along until next year, but given these recent events, I've gotten to the point where I'm calling Alan $5,000, because every time he walks into my office, he costs $5,000. And we just, I would feel remiss if I didn't let you really understand that problem and explain to you that it would be our recommendation to move forward with the 104 ERU, because we really do need to make these replacements and repairs.
Alan, how many of the, what percent of the pipes in the city you said were over 50 years old?
I estimate 60%. That would be a low-ball estimate. You know, there are the smaller pipes. I mean, there are some larger pipes, don't get me wrong, but they're, the ones that are really the big issues right now, they're making, you know, causing the backups and we're having the biggest problem with, are the smaller pipes that are failing one, and then they are over capacity. You know, these pipes were designed when there was a lot of empty locks around and there was a lot of green space. So now that everything's covered up, you have more water trying to get into that funnel, and that, you know, you pour water into a funnel, it only can go down so quickly. So that's basically why I liken it to-
Now, the piping that would be replaced, will this be compatible to the stormwater so we will meet the next step that the state put on us on?
I don't think that we're going to solve any water quality issues with some of these repairs. I think the water quality issues are going to have to be tackled in a much broader way because of the changes in the way we need to treat stormwater. You know, we used to deal with exfiltration, now it's exfiltration plus, you know, denitrification material. So what we can do in-house with that process, we will certainly do when we're replacing things, but you can only exfiltrate if you're in a certain soil type. So, I mean, there's a bunch of different answers to your question, but, you know, we will do what we can in the process to do that.
Another question, Glenwood Avenue.
Yes, sir.
How stable is it after all these rains? Are we starting to see?
Glenwood, the Glenwood trunk? I think the Glenwood trunk is adequate for now, but the feeders into the Glenwood trunk is where we're having the problems. And that is the Sherwood area, the Sherwood Avenue area, the Glenwood area. Once we, if we can replace some of those pipes, we might also fix some backup problems, but in that, that trunk still needs to be either derooted and lined or replaced.
Here's my reason. If you're going to start replacing all these feeder lines into it, not that it's a waste, but when you have to redo the Glenwood trunk line, is these new lines that you put in still going to be able to work with the new system?
Yeah. The problem is not the area that we were going to replace because, with the 319 that we had for the Lorry Lane trunk, these are other areas that we're going to do to supplement that project. So if we can do that, and then have available funds to do the Lorry Lane project, I think we're getting a big bang for our buck there.
Thank you. Questions from council? When you look at the overall stormwater projects that we're looking at and how they impact the water going into the lagoon, as we do these major projects, those items are going to be addressed. But anytime we have a structural break in a line, sediment gets into the line, so you're still seeing effluent going out into the river, even in a broken line like you're talking about.
Right.
So when those things happen, while it's not large on the scale of stormwater, it's still allowing things to get into the lagoon system, whether it ends up in the canals or where.
Absolutely.
It's still stuff going in. And I noticed, you know, since we have this workshop, you know, I take Sherwood, I take Glenwood, out Sherwood, out to South Patrick, and I noticed there's cones in the road in Sherwood, right there where Lemon comes up into it, I guess, and I could see where the depression in the road is there. So obviously, that's a line that's in the midst of failure. It's been a depression in the road for a while, but it's definitely gotten worse over the last few months.
Right. And there's a few of those where, you know, you can, what we do now is, and basically what it is, it seems the pipes settle, because we live on sand, and the pipes end up settling, and they're older, and so, or they'll deteriorate, actually deteriorate. The metal inside the pipe will deteriorate to the point where you pop holes in the pipe or you crack seams. So what we do now is we just dig them up, we wrap them with a filter fabric, and then we fill them back in, knowing that, guess what? We're going to be back here in two months to fix the next seam, and then the next seam. So, you know, that's kind of like chasing your tail, or the hamster in the cage, doing this right here, you know, spinning around, you know, because you're working your butt up, but you're not getting anywhere. Sorry for that analogy, but that's exactly how it is.
Further, council?
I remember when we had this discussion, the $85 versus the 104, I think it was decided we'd go with the 85 just to ease folks into this incremental increase. But we knew then that we were not going to be able to see any results until the second year, when we actually took it up to 104. So obviously, the problem is still there, and I think that we need to address it.
I know for me, when you say that, I met with Courtney for over an hour today on the issue, and I think I voted for the 84 and to slowly work into it, because it would be easier for people's budget. But I also didn't have the problems that popped up that were here and now. So, I mean, if you live on those streets, that those problems occur, and you expect a certain level of service, I think, and I think there's things that we just, we can't turn our heads. And, you know, again, it's very similar to what the school board was telling us, and it was very interesting how much more it costs when you have to piecemeal a lot of things. So. All right, thanks. Alan, you remember back when we had all the hurricanes and that sort of thing, and the problems that began to pop up after that? And this is probably the same equivalent amount of rain that we had back then, if you look at the two periods of time. And we ran into things, and of course, the money was a little bit more plentiful at that point, but if it keeps raining like this is, then the next month or so, then we're going to be in real trouble. But, no, I agree, I think we probably going to have to look at funding this a little better than we were.
And FEMA doesn't want to be a participant, because I tried to get them to be a participant in front of Bill Spiegel, who's now the last after FED, and because the pipe had failed right across Glenwood there. And I was talking to the lady from FEMA, and she goes, "You know what? I can look on this, I can, Google's a beautiful thing." And that's when Google had just really come into prominence, you know, the space shots, you know, zoom in on a street. She goes, "Because I got a great guy that works for me that can just pull that street up, and I got a feeling that that problem was there before we got here." You know, so I couldn't sell FEMA on pipe problems because they knew they were pre-existing, you know? So that is the issue that we face. If we have another FED, we're going to have a lot more problems than we have now.
If this increases to the 104, does this mean you're going to be able to start projects really soon in this year?
Yes. We can solve some issues, you know, we'll have, you know, some, we'll have to move some people around, but yes, we'll definitely get some-
The residents will start seeing-
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. I was the one that was pretty vocal on looking at the step problem. I don't think we were aware of, and I spent some time with Courtney today also talking about this, and she kind of brought me up to speed on some of the things that you're facing now, and these weren't issues that were brought to the table when we initially talked about this. So, you know, I mean, we're going to be at 104 next year, and do we do it this year? You know, based on what I'm hearing, I would be okay moving in that direction and doing it now, rather than waiting until next year. If there's no further comments for right now, I'll open up for public comment on Agenda Item, Public Hearing Number Eight.
Good evening. Warren Winnick, 305 Glenwood Avenue. I want to go ahead and voice my support for the increase. I did my research, and I read the PowerPoint that was available, and the stepping, the step increase seemed reasonable at the time, but sitting here and listening to you guys and reeling how sad our infrastructure, our water infrastructure is, I vote, not only, I would urge you, go ahead with the 104, but even figure on a schedule on another increase next year. Okay? What makes Satellite Beach so good is our location, our beach, our river, and, you know, you really have to live in a box to realize that the lagoon is pretty much dying, and we are, have been contributing to it, maybe through lack of knowledge, lack of understanding of what was happening. We just haven't been paying the cost, the true cost of what it takes to live here in the lagoon. And I think Satellite Beach has always been a leader in providing natural habitat and stuff like that, and I think we should just go ahead and bite the bullet and spend the money and make it right, and do the things that we need to do to preserve our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Floor is still open for public comment. Here and no further, bring it back to council. So we're looking for a motion to establish the rate at 104?
Yes, sir. Could we make a motion to approve Resolution 952 with the change of the rate being 104 rather than $85?
I'll second that. And a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Further discussion from council? No, sir. Here and Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Decker?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. And somehow close public hearing and move on to Agenda Item Nine, Discuss, Take Action on Quarterly Budget Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask our assistant finance, I mean, assistant city manager to come up and provide our quarterly budget report review. As you recall, we try to do these for you every quarter. This is the last one, you'll see before we do our final budget amendment this year.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. As we've done in the past, we typically give four financial reports a year. This is the- and provide our quarterly budget report review. As you recall, we try to do these for you every quarter. This is the last one, you'll see before we do our final budget amendment this year.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. As we've done in the past, we typically give four financial reports a year. This is the third quarter financial report for fiscal year 1314 for the city of Satellite Beach. The way we sort of approach the third year of report being that we have to wait until after June to really have a, 30 days after June to have a good idea of what's in the system, and then we're almost at the year end. So what I do in the third quarter report or what our staff does is really give you an idea of where we're going to be at year end because we're already now in August, September is the last month of the fiscal year, and then the fiscal year is over. So what the quarterly report does is it has the actuals from 1213, looks similar to your budget, the budget for 1314, which is your mid-year amended budget, your year-to-date actuals as of 630, that's where we're at year-to-date. And then we sort of try to do a year-end projection for the city council so you have an idea of where we're going to be at year end. Just to give you some highlights, so what I'll stick to is kind of where we're fairly comfortable that the city will be at year end in the next month. What I'll do is go over the large revenue sources in the general fund to begin with. They're listed in your report. But obviously, the largest revenue sources, the ad valorem, property tax ad valorem, we're looking at $5.2 million there. We were almost right on the money at our mid-year budget amendment. If you'll recall, the city in the past has sort of overbudgeted this by quite a bit in years past, and so they've always had to really wait, I think waited to the end till the audit came out, and you sort of were $75,000 in the red, so not a good thing. So we've straightened that out. So next year, I think things will be easier when it comes to your budget, there'll be no major surprises, and hopefully, we can just live within the budget and go year-to-year after that. So the $5.2 million is exactly what we projected mid-year, so we're on target to meet that revenue. The share local option gas tax, we're going to receive about $416,000. This is about $24,000 increase from the mid-year report, so we actually have some actual numbers on this. So it's probably as a result of the economy, people utilizing, spending more money on fuel. Reduction in the communication services tax, this is an item that has, you know, been before the legislature and talked about, and really, the revenue source for this has decreased over the past several years mainly due to prepaid communication devices such as prepaid cell phones as they're exempt from the communication services tax. And then also, I think the carriers, this is just from what I read, but the carriers themselves are more competitive with their cellphone plans, which is, creates less taxes for us. So we've decreased that considerably by $34,000 from mid-year, so that was a decrease. So we're off, we were off-target on that projection. But if you move down to the building permit revenues, we were on target there, actually projected to receive about $4,000 more than what we projected at mid-year, maybe even more than that as a result of the economy as well. Next slide. Increase in the half cent sales tax, it's about an $18,000 increase from mid-year. And then the program activities is on target, what we projected mid-year, $450,000, and that's as a result of our recreation programs. So in summary, basically, from mid-year, we're within $30,000 of revenue projection. On a $10 million budget, that's pretty close, so that was a good thing. Sorry about the font size here, I didn't realize it would be that small on the screen. But what I'll do is I'll go over each individual expense from each department. In the legislative department, basically, there's a $10 change in the budget. You know, all the way through here, you'll see that mainly the large, mainly, most of the departments are under budget or there's a few that are, you know, projected to be over, but let's be, again, these are just projections. City Clerk's Office is within budget, Support Services is over by about $15,000. We did bring on a comptroller position, and we did pay her more than what the previous accountant made, however, it is in the same pay grade. I think you're going to see some good things come out of the Finance Department, things are going to be on time, and I think we're set up for the next several years at least in our department there. And then also, some costs with ADP that were added to our department as well. So that's kind of why that's a little bit over than what was at mid-year. General Government Services is within budget, the Police Department will be under budget, the Fire Department will be under budget, the Building and Zoning Department is right on budget, Public Works will be under budget, the Recreation Department was slightly over budget, but as I look back on that, the projection was based on, we projected year-end based on the three months of the busy time in the summer where we have our part-time as part of the salary, so that was a little bit more on the salary projections. The salaries will fall in line with what was budgeted mid-year. So that is a correction we'll need to make as far as our projection numbers. However, the year-to-date numbers are accurate, the 630 numbers. And the inter-fund transfers, and then the designated fund balance is right on target as we're projected to put in approximately $222,000 into our reserves again this year. So that'll push our reserves up close to $1 million. So that's a really good thing for the city considering that just two years ago, there was $35,000 in your fund balance. So the total expenditures were $34,000 less because of the revenues were $34,000 less. So the general fund budget is in line to meet the mid-year projections. I don't see any, foresee any problems at year end. Next slide. The other funds, of course, are our Community Services Fund, that's on target, the Stormwater Fund. I'll show you some, the adjustments are necessary in that fund, as you'll recall. The city had budgeted to bring in money from reserves. After we paid off a grant in one year that wasn't budgeted last year, the reserve balance went to zero. So we actually had some expenses at the beginning of the year when we caught that problem. We halted, that would be the Lori Lane project. We stopped the engineering, but we still had to pay the fees during the initial couple of months. So it was a good thing we caught that as early on as we did because if we were sitting here now and were continuing that project, the money would have to come from somewhere to pay for those expenses. So it's not a very large amount, but as the city manager said, the Capital Assets Fund is going to have to make a transfer into that fund to help offset some of those engineering costs for the Lori Lane project, which is currently on hold. Law Enforcement Trust Fund is on target, Community Development Trust Fund is on target, and the Capital Assets Trust Fund is on target from mid-year. So this really, really plain and boring compared to mid-year, I think we're kind of getting some things straightened out as far as where our projections need to be in our reporting. Next slide. Go back to the Stormwater Fund, being that this is the one that was a little bit off-target. The Stormwater Utility Fee Revenue is $314,000, that's what we currently collect from stormwater fees, and our expenses are $350 projected at year end. So you can see the difference, we're not bringing in what we're spending at year end, so that deficit has to be made up by somewhere. And currently, we propose that to bring in $35,000. You'll make a year-end budget amendment that will bring in $35,000 from the Capital Assets Fund to offset the debt service payments for those capital projects that were previously constructed. So the general fund, as the city manager said, is already paying for the maintenance. Now we need to pay for the deficit that, so we have put a hold on all stormwater expenses until year end. So next year, with the council's approval tonight, I think we'll be able to straighten those issues out in the Stormwater Fund and continue to do the projects that are needed. So in summary, city departments have made the necessary adjustments to balance the budget despite significant decreases to revenues at mid-year. If you remember, at mid-year, stormwater, once again, we had projected to bring in $100,000 for the maintenance from the Stormwater Fund, and we had to come up and cut back on the expenses to make up that shortfall, so we successfully did that. The projections show an increase in year-end reserves of $222,000, represents the proposed increase of $222,633 from mid-year. That's a projection, it's set to change, but we're on target. I think the periodic review presentations and transparency of financial reporting has allowed the city council to stay abreast of the financial conditions of the city and make adjustments as necessary throughout the fiscal year. So I think by doing these reports and being so thorough with them and making these projections kind of gives everybody a good feeling on where we're heading and what changes need to be made. So I think we're, the city council and city manager has really stayed on top of the finances for the city. And looking ahead, city staff will begin the preparation for the 1314 financial audit already again. You just approved the contract for our auditors, so we'll begin working with them to get the 1314 audit together, and then your year-end budget amendment, which will be in the next several months. We have 60 days after the end of the fiscal year to amend the budget, that will take place. And it'll be similar probably to the projections here. There may be a few small changes, but overall, the city is within their budget, and the big thing is, once again, the city's funding the city's reserve, so. With that being said, I'll answer any questions. I do know there were some questions regarding some of the expenditures I did notice in the Police Department, the mayor had a question. The year-to-date actuals is basically right off the system, so we do from time to time make journal entries. If we post something to the wrong account, we have to go back and repost it. So if the year-to-date actual is more than the year-end projection, there probably is a reason for that. There are some things that, in the Police Department, that I do need to look at, but the overall budget for the Police Department, I'm confident the city will be within that at year end.
Andy, thank you very much. I have a couple, just to, on page 30, if you would look at the line item that says "Other Benefits Two for the Actual to Year Projected," I think those numbers are probably, could be transposed or something, on that line, it says the actual is $24,092 and the year-end projected $19,501.
Yes.
Okay? And then on page 34, under Internet, also the same thing.
Same situation. I believe we've made a journal entry, that'll need to be moved a portion of that to the Police Department budget. We just charged it to that line item and it needs to be corrected.
Page 37, on the dispatch, the police, you said dispatch differential, which we went through that.
Yes.
And then on page 48, donation, beautification trust, I think the same thing.
Yes.
Okay? Any further questions from?
I'd just like to make a comment. Andy, there's really been a huge improvement in finance since you've been on board, and I know that as one council member, I have a lot of confidence in the reports that you give us, and I really appreciate your effort.
Thank you very much. I'll pass that along.
Good.
Further questions?
No.
At this time, open up for public comment. Here and on back to the council.
I'll make a motion to accept the third quarter budget report.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Gott to accept the report. Andy, I just want to say thanks, buddy. About time he got back to work, though, and.
It's my job.
Hope the vacation was good. Lennart?
Counselor Byron?
Yes.
Counselor Montanaro?
Yes.
Counselor Dino?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Seth, thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 10.
Yes.
Agenda 10. Discuss Take Action Update Regarding Medical Marijuana.
Good evening. We have an update, if you will, more of some information to allow the council to give some direction on the potential for the medical marijuana law to be passed in November. And it was our, it was our thought to get together with the city manager and present some information to you in an effort to try to get a little direction on if this were to pass, what would you like us to research as far as what direction would you like to go in regards to dispensaries and locations and things like that? Basically, like the pill mill ordinances and other cities around the area are getting out in front of it, for lack of a better term, to make sure that when and if the law passes, the city is comfortable with its position on who can do what, where, in the city of Satellite Beach. And so really, that's what we're doing. Lieutenant, still can't get past that, Commander Barrios has done a lot of research and is going to give a very brief presentation of some information. We don't have every answer to every question. We try to get some information as far as what's going on in the area, what other people are doing, a few options that you have, and really, again, the purpose of this is to just give whatever information we can in a relatively short period of time and just get a little direction from the council as far as where you would like to see us focus our attention and research for the future.
Good evening. As the chief is saying, it looks like the medical marijuana amendment is asking me to go through. It seems like everything I've gone through on the Internet seems to be going towards medical marijuana is going to be actually approved in Florida as other states have. So what I did is I just put together some points, and I believe you have in your package, and I'd just like to go right down the line on them, on the types of marijuana usage that we'll be dealing with, medical marijuana, which is prescribed to patients with debilitating diseases, although states, it also states that, or excuse me, in states that have legalized medical marijuana, they're also allowing patients with minor pains to also take marijuana. Medical marijuana is often sold at storefront dispensaries and not pharmacies. So it's not something that you just have a prescription for and go to the pharmacy, you actually get it from a storefront dispensary, which is something that we want to try to see if either one can be banned or we'll have to pay, put some restrictions on as far as where we want them to have in Satellite. As far as recreational marijuana, although the public view on marijuana is wavering somewhat, the fact remains that it's still considered a gateway drug, especially to the youth. With the introduction now of also e-cigarettes, the chance of juveniles abusing is even higher than what it was before. These electronic instruments claim to be odorless and almost undetectable. Federal law basically states that cultivation, distribution, and possession of marijuana is prohibited other than to engage in federally approved research. But contrary to the law, 18 states and the District of Columbia currently exempt medical marijuana users from penalties. Colorado and Washington also legalize small amounts for recreational use to individuals over the age of 21. In states where marijuana has been legalized for medical purposes, more than 90% of those approved are for common ailments like back and neck pains, cramps, muscle spasms, not the debilitating diseases they were intended for like AIDS, cancer, and ALS. If it is approved in Florida, the wording, or the word is that there's only five growers who meet certain criteria in the state of Florida can actually manufacture, process, and distribute the product. There may have to be nurseries that have been in business for at least 30 years. As far as we know, we don't have any nurseries in the city that fall onto that, but that's still just wording. We don't know if that's what the state of Florida is going to go with. The amendment overview, basically, is the ballot summary states that it is only for those with debilitating diseases, but also states that it will be acceptable for other conditions for which a doctor believes that the use of medical marijuana would outweigh the potential risk to the patient. This language could open the door to widespread use for marijuana, of medical marijuana, as stated, for minor ailments, back, neck pains. Prescription is not required, as stated earlier. All they need is a physician's certification. This is not a form of prescription, this is a written recommendation that is used to go to the storefront dispensaries to buy your marijuana. The amendment does not address parental consent, so according to us, it's not required. Unlike other states with medical marijuana laws, amendment does not provide an age limit, nor does it require parental consent for minors access to medical marijuana. Background checks for caregivers is not required. Caregivers are described in the amendment, any amendment are not required to have background checks, training, or certification. This loophole could open the door for abuse by allowing addicts, drug dealers, and convicted felons to become caregivers. Today's marijuana is a lot more potent than what it was in the past. In the 60s and 70s, the THC level of marijuana was about 9%, I mean, excuse me, 1%. Back in '83, it was about 4%. It is currently up to 11%. And that, I mean, that shows you how it's gone up. And now with the e-cigarettes coming out for smoking pot, and for the states that are decriminalizing possession, a variety of these companies are sprouting up and selling actually e-cigarettes that are just for marijuana. These things are a hybrid between a joint and an e-cigarette in that you can actually put the dry herb into the e-cigarette and take it to the point of combustion and then just put it away. Once again, these things are basically marketed as undetectable and also that your product lasts a little longer because as soon as you let go of the little ignition which is battery-operated, it stops burning or stops vaporizing, so you get to keep a lot more of your product with you, which gives you a longer-term high. Once again, no lighter, no smell, and no smoke is one of the other things that they're basically saying. I saw in one of the articles that I read online where a gentleman said that he that he rode a train from Baltimore to New York for work, and the whole time, he was hitting on his e-cigarette, well, for his marijuana, and that he was never detected by anyone as smoking it. And that's one of the things that we're, in law enforcement especially, are, you know, something that we're going to have to go up against, because as these e-cigarettes and this medical marijuana comes out, and eventually, what we believe is the overall thing that's going to happen, the recreational use, I mean, this is going to be something for us to actually have to deal with in our community. The security issues that we'll have to deal with is, if we do have any dispensaries in the city, we're going to have to really focus on these dispensaries, because they become magnets for crime. You get people that just want to rob the places, if not the patrons, and then the fact also that you have, you can have less than honest workers and patients that'll make backdoor deals. As soon as they get their medical marijuana, they're making a deal to sell it to someone else, whether it's a child or whoever it may be. Banning dispensaries, excuse me, thank you, chief. The amendment does not address banning any dispensaries in the state of Florida, although in California, back in 2013, their Supreme Court went ahead and said that their counties and municipalities could ban medical marijuana dispensaries, but on the flip side, in, I believe it was Michigan, their Supreme Court states that the municipalities and counties cannot. So, we don't know where Florida's going to fall in line as far as whether they'll allow the city to ban it or not, and if not, then I imagine we would have to do something at least to make it more restrictive, to make sure they're away from our schools, make sure they're away from our kids. Unfortunately, it just looks like it's going to pass. It's just how we need to actually look at it to attack it and keep it away from our kids and our youth.
Thank you very much. Input from council. Question, Jim, can we say pharmacies only? And then, at least a start, until we got a ruling on that?
I haven't really looked at it yet. I mean, we, the city adopted the pill mill stuff, and we established our own regulations for it, and if, I mean, I haven't really sat down and looked at any of this, any of this stuff, but based on what the commander said was, it sounds like the ability for the city to regulate is there. I'd have to read whatever the Supreme Court cases were from California and Michigan to find out why or how they interpreted their particular, because it may, it may be predicated completely on how the ballot measure was approved, the language that was actually in the ballot measure. So, you know, I can't give you a specific answer right now, but just in the idea of being able to regulate, I, you know, my understanding of the referendum item is, is that that is still open. You know, then you got the other issue, is what is the legislature going to do, and if and how it may preempt the issue, which we don't know that yet either.
What is the ballot language going to be?
I haven't gone through and read it. I mean, they've got the summary, which is the 15 words, and I haven't gone through to look at the actual language of it.
Well, the amendment, actually, I have a copy of, doesn't really, I mean, I can test it up to the city manager and everything. I don't think, I just found this online just today, so I'm not sure if I've got this, a copy of this to the council, but it just addresses medical marijuana treatment centers, but doesn't really say what they do, other than cultivating, and also, so that's one of the scares also, is that it doesn't really say how many and what is actually considered a medical marijuana cultivating center. Could it be, you know, some places like California, I think they even have where people can grow plants in their homes, you know, five plants per family.
That's not going to be the ballot language, though.
No, 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 the ballot language, I'm not sure, this is the amendment to the medical marijuana. I mean, the language on the ballot, I'm not sure if that's the same as the, what the amendment is.
My understanding of what the ballot's actually about is, is just simply to allow, what's the language, debilitating medical condition, and then whatever the other language is about weighing the balance between what the medical condition is and the detriment. And then, you know, and that's what I'm saying, though, it's ultimately going to, in part, boil down to what the legislature does and how much it's going to decide it's going to preempt the field of regulation. So, but I mean, there's, at this point, there's no reason for the city not to at least take a position on how it would like to proceed with it.
You know, we've already regulated adult entertainment in this city. We've already regulated the pain mill issue, and one of the policy committees, in fact, at the annual conference, my wife Barb, who was our former city clerk, came, and she was a registrar, and I paid for her to attend the conference. She went to the policy committee meeting to discuss this, and basically, we can look at this, and we can regulate this, and the Florida League of Cities is looking at working with the legislature to address some type of legislation that would be a blanket-type scenario for all cities. But with that being said, if whatever we do is stricter than whatever that is, based on the fact that we've had it in place, our ordinance would hold up even with whatever the League of Cities ultimately comes up with, with the legislature. So, if our intent is to put us in a situation where we are with adult entertainment and with the pain, you know, places, then I think we should probably try to move in that direction and take a position on it, so that if what the Florida League of Cities and the legislature come up with is something that's not going to be compatible for what we want to see for our city, then we've already got something in place.
I attended, like I said, I attended the Taxation Committee, and the big discussion there is what's going to happen with all the money that comes off of this, and that's, nobody's figured that out either. Where's it going to go, if it's sold here, and that sort of thing. But the, going around the room, there's several, several cities there, obviously, and maybe some of them are way far ahead of this. Matter of fact, I was sitting next to Carol McCormick, and that's how we ended up with the Palm Shores ordinances I asked her for, just included into our packet. So, I do think, Jim, we can regulate it in some way. You know, I think we need to take a look at how we want to regulate. That'd be my opinion on this. And some of it got, the conversation towards the end, they finally wrapped it up, got kind of bizarre. I mean, they were, there were some cities that were trying to figure out how they were going to deal with the fact that the medical marijuana is not for me or my family, it's for my pet. I'm, yeah, that's everybody's reaction, is that it's for my, my German Shepherd. I give it to the dogs. And they mean, you know, and then also the problems that all the animals in the house are a little bit dysfunctional because of that. So, this is a much bigger issue than just me buying it, or Frank buying it, or whatever. It's for my pet. And so, I mean, I don't know how you're going to deal with that, guys.
Well, the other, the other issue, which I don't know if it's, I don't recall that it's addressed, but I, but some of the other states, from what I understand, is, is it's not just the marijuana, it's the THC, and they're actually doing liquid THC. So, that's another aspect of this whole thing, too, which may go to the pets part, I guess, but...
I don't know. It was bizarre.
Mark, would this stop Indy from barking?
We can run it as a test, Warren.
If it is, sign me up.
Turn it over to Jeff and let him work that problem.
People just bark really, really slowly.
In the past, with the adult entertainment and the pill mills, we took a pretty strong stand. So, I think we could direct Jim to go on that type of scenario, how we did the last two, and come up with something, taking a look at other people's, what Cocoa Beach and so forth did, and see how it fits us.
You have a big correlation between the pain management clinics and the dispensaries, in my opinion. And you saw Cocoa Beach's ordinance did capitalize on their previous pain management clinic ordinance, and kind of just made them both the same, which may be an option for us, since we already have a pain management clinic ordinance. I don't think outlawing them entirely is an option in Florida personally. They've never, our state has never allowed us to do anything like that. So, I would, I would recommend, you know, going down that path of making those very similar ordinances.
How has the pain clinic ordinance been for the Police Department? Is it working?
Absolutely perfectly. The, it's working exactly as designed. It's being complied with to the letter. It's not been issue one. And if I could, just as a quick summary, I believe from what I'm hearing, we do not want to be the test city that, that says, let's completely ban it and be the case that goes to the Supreme Court that decides what Florida's going to be, if that's what I'm understanding. The second thing it would be then is to somewhat tailor that, yes, if this passes, then yes, they are, could be available in Satellite Beach based on some general restrictions similar to the, to the pill mill ordinance. And I think with that direction, that would be a good place to start, and we can come back with something then. The city attorney can come back in collaboration with something that gets us in the process, like, like you said, because what Councilman Montanaro mentioned, which is very important, is, I have read and heard similar information, it's important enough to just highlight one last time, that if we do get something in place, then when and if the state comes through and it passes, and then there's other legislations and regulations, ours more often will, will stay put and be grandfathered in, for lack of a better term, because it's already done, ready, and on the books. So, it wouldn't be a bad idea to do what we're doing now, continue progressing, get out in front of it, and come up with something.
I just have one more comment, because we talked, I kept talking about the THC levels, and there's some states that have regulated that. So, that might be something we won't, might want to bring to the attention of the League of Cities as something that we want the legislature to address, because they're ultimately going to have to put their two cents in, and we might have to do adjustments to our ordinance at that time. But the THC level in some states are highly regulated, where they are required to submit to tests, and it's kind of like surprise tests from, you know, I think it's the Health Department that has to do that. So, there, there may be ways to address that fear and keep that issue at bay. So, that might be something we want to bring up to their attention when we go to our committee meetings.
At this time, I'll open up for public comment on this agenda item. Here and then, back to council.
I think they're stunned.
So, Jim's had enough direction?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 11. First will be the City Council Workshop Meeting, August 27 at 7:00 PM.
Stop right there. We need to postpone the handbook workshop. I'm proposing that it move to September the 24th. I have been inundated with writing projects. The next thing that's due is the budget, which I'm editing. City manager wants to try for that award again. After that, I need to get that special edition Beachcaster, and then I can turn my attention back to the handbook. I have just spent a huge amount of time on that redevelopment plan, correcting the errors, finding them, correcting them. So, my plate is full, and I just can't, and that's the only one of these that's really an arbitrary deadline, so we need to move it.
To the 24th?
24th.
Is that, is that everybody's schedule?
I'm open.
Okay.
So, we're 7 o'clock on the 24th.
September 24th?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then going on to agendas for the City Council Meeting, September 3rd. Courtney?
As you recall, you will be approving your budget first reading during this period. We will be coming to you with a grant request to apply for a grant for sports field lighting, and then we'll be adding the redevelopment plan adoption first reading ordinance on this agenda item. One that is, one that Councilwoman Gott has, or Vice Mayor Gott has put a lot of time in, helping us get that in order. So, that's actually being presented to the Advisory Committee tomorrow night in CPAB on the 25th, and then it'll come to you on the 4th, or, I mean, on the 3rd for first reading, and on the 17th for second reading. And that's it.
Like I've said before, if there is any other additional items that needs to be on it, please see myself or Courtney on that. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 12, Adoption of Minutes.
I'll make a motion to adopt the July 24th workshop meeting, the August 6th workshop meeting, and the August 6 regular council meeting, as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Gott. Any discussion? Here and then, Lenore?
Houseman Martin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Houseman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Tino?
Yes, motion passes. One subject to bring up, at this time, since the qualifying's over and we know who fell in the seats, is Steve on the list to get the packets?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further?
And we expect you to memorize them, too.
There will be a test.
He's already been giving jobs right now. He's already getting jobs.
Okay. Great. Any further business? Here and then, meeting adjourned.